I'd like to call the March 23 meeting to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Madeline and Travis Johansson. Hey guys, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys so much.
So at this point, I'd like to have Dr. Woollett do the knowledge words.
So Madeline, Travis, thank you for coming tonight. You know, we do, we have you here. First of all, thank you for doing the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a hard time with that, so you totally helped us out. Thank you. So you, we have a dubious distinction of having Madeline and Travis here. They're, they've been leading the entire TIS community in a very important skill, but many of us are not skilled in at all, and that is keyboarding. Madeline, you're fifth grader, right?
Yes.
So Madeline is currently typing, how many words per minute?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one! Oh my gosh! And her brother Travis is almost there. He's equally impressive. How many words Travis?
Eighty-eight.
Oh man. So I don't know, Lisa, watch out. Watch out. That is awesome too. Gosh. So they, they got a hot community award and we're honoring them tonight. We have care packages here that have many educational items, but also replace the cool items. Travis, I think this one is for you. Hydrate.
Thank you.
Do you want to grab a picture before you get out too? That would be great. Um, I couldn't move out of the way.
Want to go this way with it?
I just figured, do you want to do an intro?
Sure, why don't you guys stand right in front of that?
That's what I was thinking. You look like you're a trick or treater with a bat.
Guys, you guys are, we're just going to do this.
And Madeline's got her dance pose on.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, Harry Potter.
There's no volume online, live TV.
It's not us.
That's not us.
Okay. Dana, you can hear us, right?
Yeah, because she was already conversing with us.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so perhaps a person will just turn it up. At this time, let's go ahead, their approval agenda, we are not changing anything tonight, so we will move on from that. I will entertain a motion for approval minutes for the March 8th and the March 9th.
Sophia Sheikh, I move to approve the March 8th and March 9th minutes.
All those in favor can say aye. Dana?
Aye.
So I can just get you in here. Any opposed? No, everyone said aye. So that passes unanimously and they will be as is. Okay, at this time, public participation, which is kind of slow over here. Okay, at this time, I will invite members online to have two minutes to speak. If you could, please raise your hand and list your name and address for Lisa. And we are all set. Seeing that there are new hands for public participation, we will close that out. Correspondence, Jacob did not send me correspondence. You sent any correspondence? He did not. Okay, so we will move from that. Quits of information, so I'll move it up to board members. Anything that they would like to say, you can do so now. Okay, Dana, you got anything? You're good? We're good? Okay.
I will forever hold my peace.
Something going on today? At this point, um, we will have our student representatives, Emily and Natalie, if you could. You could just come up and talk to the alumine. If you want, you can take the cushion chair. Yes?
So, um, for Wellness Week, we're having a guest speaker, we're having raffle baskets, and we're having, we're donating to mental health institutions.
And then also, this Friday, we're starting a Gem Day fundraiser, just for the day, to raise money for UNICEF. It's going to go towards efforts in Ukraine.
And can we talk about Annie?
Yeah, it was fantastic. Yeah, it was good.
Even Mr. Poland was there, lots of staff. See, I went to the Saturday, two o'clock, I think that. I had a family, so it was great.
Yeah, it was really good. They did great.
I think Noah Fields, like, spot on with, like, doing all, like, I mean, unbelievable. Everything was so fantastic, the scenery, like, it was, the kid, let me tell you, the kids, we got some aspiring actors and actresses, let me tell you. Um, yeah, no, that was great. And I don't think there are, there's nothing else really going on.
No, not really.
I have a quiz item. What is Garfield's favorite food?
Oh wait, I actually know that by.
How can you wear the shirt if you don't?
It's Italian.
It's Italian.
The only thing I think of is spaghetti.
You're close.
Close. I, I.
Where does he send normal, Dr. Woollett?
I don't know.
To Abu Dhabi.
To Abu Dhabi. You've been stuck.
Okay, guys. Well, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions or anything for them?
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Okay, um, committee and liaison reports, so we can go on to that. Communications, you just set up the agenda?
I did. I did have a quick PTO update, a couple of things. For Teptoe, they're still selling their spirit wear online, their butter braid pickup, which is very important to pick up because we don't, they don't have freezer space. It's on March 30th from 3:30 to 6:30 in the TIS cafeteria. And in-person book fairs are back, so TISs will begin on Friday, April 1st, and Birch Grove is scheduled for May. And they are currently planning a spring social with ice cream and basket giveaway. So stay tuned for more info on that. And the TMS PTO month's instruction fundraiser is complete and their pickup date is currently pending, but I believe it's still supposed to be in April. There's a Jeff's Kettle Corn fundraiser on April 30th, it's in store, and TMS will receive 30% of sales. And TMS night yard oats is scheduled for May 12. Talent High School Booster Clubs, senior banners, graduation lawn signs are still for sale through April 26. Their bottle and clothing drive is scheduled for, at THS for 3/26. And they have scheduled, just the other night, their annual Eagle Scramble Golf Tournament for Sunday, September 25th at Topps.
That's a lot of stuff. It's great. I love getting notified, so what's happening in the schools, I just know what's coming up. So April 1st was the TIS.
TIS, well, sorry. And they, and they always have online, both TIS and Birch Grove, so you can order online as well and get it shipped to your house.
That's awesome. Um, mental health, did they meet?
No, uh, not this week, not last, oh, it was moved to April 4th. So it's, yeah.
And then, um, did you guys have the curriculum?
No, that's, that was also moved to a Wednesday. About the top of my head, I don't know. I mean, April, April 9th.
Those two, policy?
Policy, just to stay within the trend, we are moving our next meeting. Couple of people couldn't make it, so we're moving into the 13th.
Yeah.
Dr. Woollett and I were finally able to align the schedules and had our, kind of our strategy meetings, so you'll start seeing that, that tracker start to be populated with some of the ideas that have been sent out and some look ahead agendas.
I noticed that the policy minutes were not accurate because I wasn't at the last policy meeting and you included me. Maybe I was there in spirit with you. But I wasn't there, so if we could just adjust those minutes to reflect that I wasn't there. And I was looking for the minutes because I missed the meeting and I wanted to see what happened. Mr. Paul, I noticed those minutes were a little late.
And sparse.
Well, I wasn't there, so I couldn't, I couldn't compare as to whether they were full or not.
Throw something out?
Yes.
No, you're absolutely right, though. Those minutes sadly.
Yeah, that's it.
Dana, do you have anything for Birch Grove?
Not at this time.
Just want to make sure on a basis, so I think.
I appreciate it because we're on the end of it, so we're having intermittent meetings, so.
Perfect. So let's go to, oh, I skipped over the superintendent's report, sorry.
You did, and I was trying not to.
Supposed to get eight games today. Today, so let's go ahead and go for this. I just crossed it off.
So this one's very, very simple. Every time around this time of year, I, you know, I just give a friendly reminder that, and if you look at I-1, as it fell on this particular agenda, respectfully provide this reminder, the superintendent's annual evaluation process begins, must occur no later than March 31st each year with a written copy by the superintendent, no later than June 30th of each year of the agreement. The superintendent may then provide a written reaction response evaluation, which shall be confirmed directly from the record, et cetera. No later than July 31st of each year of the agreement, the board executive session shall need that the superintendent should discuss the evaluation, et cetera. So this is, but the board is typically, well, most members who've been on the board are used to. And this is the basic heads up that this is coming. So as is the typical process, they work with the board chairs to set up the timeline and put it out there. We go through that process. The board will soon see that timeline and, and they're, you know, pieces.
Perfect, so this is just the precursor.
So this is just the heads up that it's coming. I remember, this all has to be completed by June or?
It was July 31st for the whole complete thing.
Yeah, I have to be given a written copy before June 30th. But then, the whole thing for wrapping it all up.
So I think last year with COVID.
Yeah, we pushed it out because of the pandemic and everything. I tried to get, starting as early as I could this year too, so that we, you know, go all the way through. The July piece is typically because you need to discuss things like you said.
And we will provide the timeline when we have the dates, so that we can go through. And then that way, you guys will see more of how the process goes.
Yeah, oh boy. The whole line.
Right, budget.
Okay, budget. So as you are probably aware, and I did send some communications out on it, also the town manager did send out communications to the community that the town manager's overall budget overview meetings were happening in the last week. Board of Education adopted budget for fiscal year '23 was a 3.13%, as you're aware. And the town manager reviewed that, it is required by town charter to review and go through this process. And so the town manager determined that their allocation to the Board of Education would be 2.99% or $1,221,325,000. And so it accounts to about a $55,000 reduction to the Board of Education adopted budget. So in this item, you see what my recommendations are for putting together that 55 or getting to that 55. And my recommendations are a reduction of 15,000 or approximately thereof from OPEB, which is also our pension. Reduction in 10,000 from audit line, reduction in 15,000 from unemployment line, and reduction in 15,000 of custodial supplies. We are expecting to be able to use some funds for custodial supplies from grants, so we can make up some of that at least for next year with that. Unemployment, our issue right now is getting employment, not unemployment per se. So, you know, we got to get positions filled. We don't anticipate as much of the unemployment. The audit was discussed. There's a little leeway with audit. I mean, and we may go slightly under this year, and if we do, then we'll just know that we have to adjust again. But in this particular, you know, time, I think we could make that adjustment and see how it goes. And as I said, the pensions, in discussions with the town, you know, where they're at, we, we do not need to make a contribution to that, but sometimes we do, in this case, we don't, so that will save us the 15. So that comprises the $55,000 reduction to the 2.99, and that is my recommendation.
Now, this is just for review. We don't have to vote on this per se because do we discuss this after it goes to referendum?
Yeah, the reason why I didn't put a proposed motion is that the process now is that the town manager has amended the budget the town council has to deliver with. They will ultimately set the final budget percent. And then I will come back to you and make any adjustment, adjusted recommendations, or just say, here's my final. But if it is 55, this would be what I would be recommending.
Dana?
Thanks. Um, so if I'm clear, and maybe I'm wrong, so, and I don't know if this is what you were describing, Dr. Woollett. So we did it, we had our vote, bipartisan vote of 3.13, and we submitted it to the town council or the town manager. The town manager submitted, recommended a 2.99. But we have to kind of go back and know that the town council has not adopted that budget. So that 2.99 is not necessarily our firm budget, correct? And that's what you're saying?
That is the town manager's recommendation.
Okay, so the town council still needs to vote and, and pick a, a budget or a number or a final, whatever. Uh, I guess my big, my big thing is, so tomorrow is the public hearing, correct? For it? Sorry, I'm sorry, cut out. Okay, I, I think it's important that, that we're aware of that. Because I, I mean, I think we all felt very strongly about where we landed on that 3.13. Um, you know, it's not necessarily quote unquote a number per se, but it's, it's what our students and staff needed for our school year. And it's supporting level services, right? I mean, we're not adding anything extravagant. We're just maintaining and sustaining services on our 3.13, correct, Dr. Woollett? And I know that, like, you get, you get creative in, in reductions sometimes, but I get concerned, um, going any lower simply because of our previous budgets with such low numbers. There's zeros, 0.18, and so on, so forth. I mean, I don't need to, to repeat it to this group, but, you know, I think it's, it's, it's paramount that we stand united behind the budget that we proposed. I mean, we spent hours and hours and days and days and weeks, weeks, um, really kind of fine tooth combing this and, and seeing. And I think what we focused on, and I, and this is my position on it, we didn't focus on the number, 3.13 or 2.99 or 3.49 or whatever. We focused on the needs of our students and staff. And I think that's paramount, that we need to continue to discuss that as a united Board of Ed, that our three point, that our proposed budget, not necessarily the 3.13, but our proposed budget was really what our student and staff needs to continue to maintain and sustain services, to continue to thrive, our, our school system to continue to thrive. But the 2.99, I just wanted to remind everybody that that isn't in stone. It's just the proposal. So there's still conversation through our town council. If I'm understanding, so, all right, all right, thank you. That's all I have for now. I appreciate it, and tomorrow is the public hearing.
Um, so I realize that you were asked this question Monday night too, but I think it's important. Um, if they decide, if the town council decides to go lower than 2.99, what becomes at risk for us taking, taking out?
Well, um, you know, the, the, there have been some fluctuations over the years. And the, the hardest and most impactful fluctuations are when we have budget years that go up and down dramatically. And so if, you know, we're at a 0.1% or 7, or 8, you know, that type of thing, that tends to be quite impactful for the ministry. So, you know, at 2.9, I think that I deeply respect town manager's process. I think she's worked hard to try to find a number that makes sense. She didn't take the Board of Ed budget outright, which is, is her right and obligation and duty. Um, I think she did do, you know, she did do a good job with that 2.99, the why we have to make an adjustment. We can still keep our pathways, you know, engineering and business pathways going. We can still do all the advanced kind of curriculum work if we wanted to do. We can still do all of the things that we had talked about, where the objectives of the board and, you know, in the benefit, to the benefit of the students and talent and the community of talent. If we have a reduction that goes into that kind of zone again, that tends to have a lot of impact. And special education, it's a fairly fixed cost, you know, we have to provide services that way. Typically, what will happen is the regular general education will be where that lands. And over the years, that has been where that has landed. Because you really don't have much flexibility in other places. So that could be impactful against the pathways. And, you know, in the pathways, these objectives help you against the attrition to magnets and charters, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know. So, you know, without going into it in great detail, because I don't know what that impact would also, you know, what the extent of it would ultimately be, and I can comment more on it if, if, and when that happens, or if not. But, uh, you know, it does, that, that will fall back against staff and staffing, you know. And I think, as you know, we provided a lot of information. We're not in unreasonable staff size. We're not at an unreasonable school, you know, class ratio. We are, we've been very careful about those things. And the board has also put in a lot of due diligence. So you're aware as well as I, that if something went, you know, very low, we would have to take it. You've already seen the budget. You know that we would have to go to places to reach certain numbers in hundreds of thousands. We don't have that emphasis, so it would be impactful. But just to chime into that, and I think we all agree, and we've, we've seen before where it goes, and we'll put together a relatively solid budget. The board has done an amazing job this year of putting together one that tries to make, you know, both sides of the fiscal conversation happy while fulfilling the needs of our students. So we've still got to be prepared. I think Dr. Woollett's done a great job here and also the papers that we don't see here in looking at those whatevs. You know, if the council, the council could always come back and say, no, here's a little extra. Or, nope, we're going to have to take a little bit more, and then we're sharpening our pencils and trying to figure out where that doesn't affect our students. And how we do that, and not saying it's going to be easy. In fact, I hope we don't go there. But inside, we're going to have to plan either way and just be prepared.
So once again, tomorrow night, public, I'm assuming it's at seven o'clock?
I, I think so.
All right, I couldn't pull it up, so that's why.
I will look, I will let you know.
Because I do believe it's, um, public hearing is at seven. I believe so.
Yeah, I couldn't find it on the town council site.
Yeah, so I, that's why I was hoping.
It's, uh, to me, it looks like it's 7 to 8:30 at the library program. March 24th, 7 PM, library program room.
Is it hybrid?
It, uh, it looks like it's, I can't tell from this announcement. But I, the last couple of meetings were hybrid, so I would imagine it is hybrid. His library program room, they typically do that when they're going to have poll.
On the agenda, it says library program room and Zoom.
And Zoom, okay. Just so that everyone.
7 PM.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, on that. Then we can move on. We can just break down to board action for the K1, health foods to fish.
So just as a lead into this, lots of words. You know that every, well, those of you who have been on the board, this comes around every year. By, by, by accepting, and here's the trick, right? By accepting the considerations in one, two, and three, you accept all of these considerations, we are then able to get funding reimbursed. So it allows us to get funding for our efforts towards healthy food initiative items. And it also gives us flexibility in terms of, you know, where there are certain events, we do have some flexibility with respect to allowing the state of beverages not listed, et cetera, et cetera. And this helps with some of our clubs and activities and so on. So my recommendation to the board, having had time to look at this and read it, is that go with the motion to accept, you know, basically, accept the considerations in one, two, and three. And that's what we did here in a motion to allow the superintendent to support and authorize the 2022, 2023 healthy foods certification and allow for exemption of the food beverage items as well as other provisions as indicated in considerations one, two, and three.
Um, I wanted to know motion.
Uh, there we go. Motion to allow the superintendent to support and authorize the 2022, 2023 healthy food certification and to allow for the exemption of food and beverage items as well as other provisions as indicated in considerations one, two, and three.
So gallop me a second?
Any discussion? Do any board members have any? Go ahead.
Quick question, Dr. Woollett, so the reimbursement and the authorization to go ahead and apply for these is contingent on approval of all three? That's my understanding is that you have, in order to go smoothly through that process, you have to approve that. But the other piece is, I think, maybe the third one. If you don't, we can't do the beverages and other things that maybe some of the other groups want to do as, you know. I, I see in the PTOS and groups like that. So it gives you the ability to do that without violating. So three lets you have that, that window. All three, yes. And so all three are important, because if somebody does it and, and we just assume that it's there, but we haven't authorized it, you can violate that, kind of, so.
I think we, I remember asking that one year, and it was having the sales. Yes, exactly. Okay, so seeing that there are no other further questions from board members, we can do a vote. So all those in favor can say aye. Dana, are you an aye as well?
Aye.
That passes unanimously? This is all set. Let's move on to, it says K2, but it's really, oh, oh two.
All right, so, um, so queuing it up, the possible cancellation of summer Board of Education meetings around this time of year, or as we ride into the spring, we consider looking at the summer. And as dedicated as you all are, and we all are, there are some meetings in the summer that, you know, give you more flexibility than others. So, um, we generally, as a board, look at it and decide whether you want to cancel it. The 13th is on here because it trails Independence Day. And so you have maybe that week, and then, you know, potentially you can elongate that. Or you can choose one of the others, or choose none, and have, you know, all the meetings during the summer. Typically during the summer, if we do have them, probably there'll be some people who can, cannot make it. So that one in particular, or that, those in July tend to be the ones, it seems like people are connecting to other things in their lives. And, you know, you might have an issue with, uh, people, that type of thing.
But. Yes, I think last year we ended up doing it just throughout discussion, and I think that, that was the one that we ended up. You know, so how are board members feeling about that?
I'll say I love the 13th. As a, from a coach perspective, I will be just starting, fingers crossed, All-Stars. And so every night, that would be great. That would, that would be great. The 13th would make me smart.
Parents' perspective, if your son would like to play All-Stars? That would work out for me, because I will also be at baseball every night.
Love to not have to worry about a meeting. That'd be great.
Okay.
Guess I'm on the other side. For two reasons. The one, it seemed like just a little bit ago, we said that July was when we'd be finalizing, or could be finalizing, the superintendent's evaluation. So we know that in July, we could possibly have some things going on. My concern in canceling any meeting for July or August in March, is I don't think we have a good enough sight picture of what's going to be coming down that bike. I think deciding to cancel or not to have it is best made late May, early June.
I'll, we're staying with the July 13th, saying no meeting. Because then that helps with the vacation plans.
Yeah. My, uh, to be done by two firsts. But, you know, she. So June 30 is the, is the eval, but then the negotiation for any conversation goes.
So. And that we can miss a meeting in there and still work that. Because that's also undone under executive session, that's all, so.
Dr. Will, with it, wouldn't, uh, missed meeting on July 13th mess with you at all as superintendent?
No, whichever, whichever one you guys don't want to have.
Gotcha.
I'm guessing.
No, student reps or, are you, are you seniors or seniors? Seniors, you know, see, so then we get new ones, because sometimes there's a junior and a senior. It, it always changes, and we didn't, don't find out till September, so.
I did hear from them, they they want to stay on for a couple of years.
She was the Garfield in the lasagna. She was like.
It's just so fun.
Like, no. So, um, Dana, go ahead.
Um, so I was going to ask our student reps, too, because I didn't know if they were juniors or seniors. And for someone who had a Garfield sleeping bag growing up, I didn't know it was a lasagna. But, um, no, I think it's paramount that we are aware of, you know, everybody's personal lives and and vacation plans, including our superintendent. And I know that last summer, I think we kind of, in the last couple of summers, to be honest with you, we kind of just went full force through and and canceled minimal, simply because of COVID and Birch Grove opening or not opening and doing the portables and then doing all of that. I think it's important that we are going through a rigorous budget process right now. For those of us who are at, you know, every Board of Ed meeting and and every budget meeting and and budget workshop and and such, and getting through this budget season, it still has a little bit of ways to go. We have the public hearing tomorrow and other meetings through the budget process through our town council partners. We've been through a lot, our superintendent and, you know, was at a meeting last night. And daughter did, one of the, one of his kids was getting an award. You know, I think we need to be cognizant that we need to balance our personal and professional lives and our volunteer lives as well. Like I said, again, we've kind of gone through this entire budget process and been at every meeting and and being cognizant. So I think finding that healthy balance of meetings that we should have or meetings that we can cancel or postpone or what have you is is very important to us as a group. I'm all for, it's irrelevant what date to me. I just think it's important that we look at, look at each other as a team and and understand that finding that balance is super important. So if July 13th is the date, I'm fine with that. If it's any of the other dates, I'm also fine with that. Especially for those of us who, you know, we've all been there through this entire process, through COVID and through the budget process and coming to all the meetings and and, you know, expanding our base and and going to those things. So I would be for that. And I would vote pro that. And if there was a second, I'd also vote that. As long as we do have our business with the superintendent eval done, and it's, looks like that's going to be done before July. So we definitely need to keep that in mind. And that's where I'm at with everything.
It's on two dates, so let's just get the one date down.
What are the, um, dates of extended school year?
They go from July 5th through August 4th.
Is there anything we ever have to?
No, not generally. By then, everything is underway and.
And we can review how it went in August.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we wouldn't have any, any info with respect to aggregate, you know, how it was until then. But, you know, they do a great job with it.
So I would entertain a motion to cancel the July 13th day.
So yes.
I can't read the motion. I entertain.
Jayden registered, uh, motion to cancel it. Motion to cancel the Board of Education meeting of July 13th, 2022.
Dana, Paul Ben, oh, go ahead, sorry. Sorry, Sophia, go ahead.
Yes, she can.
Okay, all those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. Okay, it still passes. July 13th is is going to be canceled. So Jen can send out her little fancy thing, canceled. Let's move on to the CRF request.
All right, so, um, so the two items here tonight are really kind of wrapping up some business. You're aware of some of this already. I'm going to kind of just go over it and summarize. I tried to do it on one page to try to help with that process. So if you just take a quick look, um, November 20, November 17, 2021, FFC met in the coronavirus relief fund. You know, there was a conversation and, you know, they prepared information to share at the November 29th meeting. It was a joint town council Board of Ed meeting. And those who remember that, uh, that were there or tuning in, remember that on November 29th, in the joint town council Board of Ed meeting, there was information presented that articulated a request for 50% of the remaining BOE budget with fiscal year 2021 to be allocated to the coronavirus relief fund. This was articulated prior at the end of the year in our FACE document. This was a restating of it in that meeting, because that meeting was specifically covering a few things. And one of those things was the CRF. And so, as you recall, because of the pandemic and everything, those meetings were kind of pushed off a bit. And so that's why that meeting happened, you know, when it did, and that topic was covered when it was. So it articulated what had already been out there, that 50% of 798.310 or 398.155, you know, would be pressed to be rolled into the CRF. So in the January 12, 2022 meeting of the Board of Ed, the following motion was passed. Mr. Murray motioned to authorize superintendent to communicate this town council that the Board of Ed endorses the renewal of coronavirus relief fund in its original form prior to excluding the addition of E for two-year duration. And then in the subsequent January 25th meeting of 2022, that the 398.155, we moved an appropriation of 398.155 we made to the COVID relief fund for the Board of Education from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, and approved to extend the COVID relief fund agreement with the Board of Ed through September 30th of 2022 and meet between the months of October and December to review the purpose and for determining its continuation or termination. That on, basically. So that meeting then did pass that before the coronavirus relief fund was continued and that amount was transferred. Further, on January 25th, in the meeting, the funds were articulated to be used for AEs, which is the associate educators in fiscal year 22, and the extended school year program, which falls into fiscal year 23, which is why the decision was made to make it extend through September 30th so that it could cover those two fiscal years. So essentially, reading up to this, the Board of Ed is now asking to have the 116,960 from the CRF for the current year be transferred to, from their general fund to Board of Ed funds to cover the AEs essentially. Yeah. So the Board of Ed action is articulated here, or a proposed action for you, motion to authorize the superintendent to request 116,960 to be transferred to the Board of Education from the coronavirus relief fund in fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the just set forth in the coronavirus relief fund agreement between the Board of Education and the council renewed through September 30th. That was all the way through this, to where we are now.
Perfect. So this time, um, I will entertain a motion to authorize superintendent. So I'm not going to repeat.
I would like to make motion to authorize the superintendent to request $116,960 be transferred to the Board of Education from the coronavirus relief fund in fiscal year 21 in accordance with the procedure set forth in the coronavirus relief fund agreement between the Board of Education and the town council renewed through September 30th, 2022.
Tony, hold a second.
Any further discussion on this? Ready to vote? So all those in favor can say aye.
Aye. Aye.
You're an aye as well, and it's. Anything, so therefore passes unanimously. I always look at Lisa when she's writing the things there, like, yeah, she gets it, okay. Okay, so let's go on to the ERF requests.
Right, in a similar fashion, as you're aware, the education reserve fund is set up and can receive transfer at the end of each fiscal year. Remaining funds up to 1%, and then the request to be transferred into the educational reserve fund. Typically, this can't be finalized until the third quarter of fiscal year for the prior fiscal year, because the audit is then completed at times. So in accordance with ordinance 86, Chapter 8, Section 8.2, and subject to the audit confirmation of the Board of Education's year-end balance, we are making the official request that $398,115 of the BOE's audit balance that has occurred on 30th, 2021, be transferred into the educational reserve fund. And the motion that is here is a proposed motion to execute that. So I tried to say that in a paragraph versus five paragraphs here. There's less lead in this circle. This is not new.
Okay, um, any questions? So then, um, I will entertain the motion. It's listed on a wonderful paper.
Registered on motion, the town Board of Education pursuant to ordinance 86, Chapter 8, hereby makes the request that the town council transfer $398,115 of the BOE audited balance of June 30th, 2021 into the Educational Reserve Fund.
Jen Galusha, in a second?
And for the questions? The board members, even have anything to say? Okay, so all those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous again. So that passes for the educational reserve. Okay. Now, um, so the board action, so we can open up the public participation. You will have two minutes. I don't know if you have to worry about your timer, we'll have to see. Please raise your hand. Illustrate your name and address for the record. Live with much, one once. Go in twice. Okay, I'll see hands now, you can make list here. Okay, so we will close out the public participation. And we will go to points of information. I did send out an email to board members if anybody would like to join in to the COVID meetings on Thursdays. I know everyone's jumping at the bit to do it, because the board would like to be taken off.
No, we don't need, because Dana's already.
Dana, Dana is already on there, so we don't need another person. It's just that, I'm just letting everybody know. I mean, like I said, there is an opportunity for more meetings if you would like to attend more meetings.
Dana loves them, right, Dana?
I do. I get to meet, to talk to all the wonderful administrators of the district. It's awesome. I really appreciate their candor and conversation. It's a Thursday morning, 11 o'clock. Who wants to not talk to Mr. Swanson about COVID? He's, he's awesome. He's rainbows and unicorns. I love it. It's a good conversation. Be my teammate, guys.
Does somebody need to?
Then I would end up going, because I have done that before.
I was going to offer to do that.
So, you know, no, like I said, no one has to have someone on there, just once or those. I just wanted to bring it up, just in case anybody just kind of went through that email pretty quick. And the other thing I wanted to say, too, we have not said this in our meeting yet, for the Valvatorian and our Slavitorian, they were posted, Will Peter is the Valvatorian. Hope I'm saying that right. And Max Miller, Slavitorian, correct?
Yeah.
We, I thought about that the other day, and I said, we have not said that. They were announced, and we haven't said anything. So I just wanted to get that into our, yeah, I think that's great. You know, I think that's a great opportunity. He's typing away, so he's doing something. But, um.
Notes.
I did want to put that in there. So any other board members at this time?
Yeah, just to let, you know, Dr. Will and I talked about it, but this weekend, our Rage Robotics team will be heading up to Massachusetts to compete again. Made all the repairs to their, their robot. And in addition to shooting, it is now capable of climbing up the ladders and doing all of the steps needed to the game point. So depending on how they do this weekend, they may or may not then advance to the New England regionals. Want to wish them all luck? Good luck to you.
It's great.
Reading the Harare books, these machines will soon be taking our place.
That was right. My favorite booth at Talon Celebration, every year, Rage Robotics.
Anyone else at this time?
Just, that was one quick thing.
Oh.
Just want to thank, um, someone left a mystery box, a little mystery box for me at the central office today. And I don't know who it was. It was left by, what was, told me as a six-year-old student. So I'm guessing he didn't drive himself there. But I just, it was the incredibly touching. It was an incredibly kind, kind thing. It had all these, he was like paper mache, made in some incredibly creative way. And I just want to thank whoever that was. You made my entire day. You made my, my whole year, or you made my whole life. It's the coolest thing I've ever seen. So I just wanted to just tell you how much of an impact that made, thank you.
I think that deserves a picture.
I was just gonna say, I think that a picture should go on the superintendent's Facebook page.
Yeah. I will.
If you need a write-off.
I think that is awesome. That's, you know, I think that that's really important. You touch our community.
Well, it's a very, very beautiful act of kindness. So thank you to whoever that was.
Anyone else? Well, then, at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Jayden registered, I will second that motion.
I can't read the motion.
Tony Ho, move to adjourn. Jayden registered, I will second that motion.
All those in favor can say aye.
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 Dana, I hope you feel better, and we shall see you at next meeting.